Any questions on the minutes? After seven fifteen. Questions on January nineteenth, Board of General? No. Gee, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, this is, it should really say.
Yeah, I'm not, no good. Yes. On that agenda? Any questions? There you go, guys?
Yeah.
We go to the minutes at seven fifteen. What's your question? That's at seven. Altara Security?
So I invited our new, why don't you come up early? This is Irving Contreras. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Irving. Irving took over in the fall for Bob O'Leary, who was our security coordinator. He prepared a little bio, so certainly worth hearing because he has a great career. Irving Contreras, seventeen-year veteran of New York City Police Department and recently retired in the ranks of lieutenant. Early in his career, he worked in numerous assignments, starting out working in a patrol, serving as community, community leasing, quality life conditions officer. Investigated with each shift assignments, including working in the organized crime patrol bureau, narcotics division, where he worked with court enforcement agency and other law enforcement partners. He also worked in the executive administration assignments, serving in the office of management and budget. And lastly, finished his career serving in the office of the police commissioner. He worked as the agency liaison to the office of the mayor, providing critical around-the-clock sensitive information to the mayor and senior executive staff regarding the agency delivery of services. Prior to joining the police department, Irving served on active duty in the United States Navy from ninety-eight to two thousand two, and then the naval reserves from two thousand two to two thousand seven, two thousand. He was deployed to Europe and the Middle East with the USS George Washington Battle Group in support of Operation Southern Launch. He was awarded numerous military awards, such as the Navy Marine Corps Achievement Medal and a junior sailor of the crew. He completed both his graduate and undergraduate degrees at John J. College of Criminal Justice. He holds a Masters of Public Administration specializing in management and operations. And presently serves as an adjunct faculty member assigned to the Department of Law and Department of Law, Defense, Science, and Criminal Justice Administration, where he teaches criminal justice and police science courses. In addition, he holds numerous training and educational certificates from Georgetown University, John J. College of Criminal Justice, the NYPD, and he has a little, barely newborn baby too.
Congratulations.
Quite a lot for a young man. Got to retire early because of his time in the service, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Irving, it's honorable and beautiful. You have a very impressive resume.
Irving's been great. You know, it's a shift, but Altara's, as you know, we're very, very pleased with the work that Altara's has provided. You know, last year when the pandemic hit and, you know, we were closed, they immediately pivoted to supporting our reentry planning and emergency plan, which has become so much more important. And so I want to talk to Irving, we'll talk to you about what he's doing. And then since he's here tonight, I asked him to talk about the district plan, which you kind of drafted in the past. And he is authoring that with Mr. Daley, so I'll try to read it to you.
Irving, why don't you start with what you'd like to tell us?
Sure, sure. Well, I'll give you a little bit about myself. I'm an important board, I'm a very important, uh, to the public school.
Let's stop there. What, 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 I'm a gruff guy.
Are you, well, I can't really live in Marine Corps.
Oh, God, right around the corner, I was East Flatbush and I was in, uh, we went by Parrish, you know?
Yes, yes.
So I was going to, I was on Fort Flapwood, you have, you have a D on that one.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. I love Brooklyn as well. They have the public school system, you know, play chess, after-school program.
Addison, did you go to?
Yes, one eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine?
Yes.
But that was elementary, you got my picture?
Uh, high school, I were on my own, you know, but?
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
That's where I do my student teaching.
Oh, cool. A lot of people went there. Wilson Tomet, Mr. Boy, Frank the Rock, yeah.
Red Bull.
Wilson Tomet?
Was really.
I just watched The King of Saturn.
You know, Mr. Burris, he has a teacher?
That brings it up.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And basically, with the college, through the eyes of the, uh, the city university of New York system, I love getting back to there, going on my career, and it's wonderful. I'm here at the East Flataway School District, it's a technical community, from what I see. Everyone's been amazing. It's been a little, a bit, but I'm now comfortable. All the administering, all the staff, Jack, and the, you know, have done an amazing job. In the box, we've, obviously, going through a pandemic, the last pandemic was in nineteen ninety-three, and influenza. And, you know, there's obviously a need to serve the students of the community. And there's obviously economic ties with students and, you know, the household. So it's important that, you know, we address their concerns and, you know, we, you know, motivated, guided, and also provide, you know, the model for schools to follow, successful excellence. And we want to make sure that we can provide, you know, a great background for them. And also the primary thing to Altara's is providing a safe learning environment for students. And so, you know, I think this is not very serious. As you know, my background shows, you know, the public service, but also the inherent dangers of, of what we can face in society. We saw last week what was going on in the Capitol. You know, we're not always prepared, we always have to have a contingency plan of operations to ensure that, you know, we're prepared. Like, you know, to provide a safe environment for how many students, but also for all the staff members in the district. So I'm going to talk about, a little bit about what we're working on. And so this, this upcoming Thursday, we have the district emergency, the Fox meeting. And so on September seventh, twenty twenty, Governor Forman, in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, basically amended the public health emergency, Governor community with the duties. It's part of the district safety button, I'm sorry, I'm probably not that great. So he amended, besides the fourth chapter, we'd see a little more. And it basically requires color reporting from public school districts in order to continue operation in an event that the governor declared a public health emergency, we're going to move it. So this basically takes an effect on April first of this year. So we have to basically make sure we comply, and Altara's basically, then others all, um, compliant, we need compliance. February fourth is just right on the corner, we're going to basically, we're mandated by this legislation to, basically, show it to people. To, to share it with the Labor Committee, the Labor Committee. They have six protocol that it covers. One of the main, one of the main protocol is the plan clearly to conserve essential personnel, right? We saw last year how we did a lot of businesses, a lot of organizations, who, I might be, basically had to go to remote operations. So how do we basically maintain the operation for where, you know, for where, basically, where to provide distance from it? You know, we, we have to keep the upkeep of facilities and things going on the daily operation. So basically, on purpose, we're going to review this plan. After we review it, after the district safety team reviews it, it's going to go through a very big public comment period. It's going to be also reviewed by the labor committees. It's going to have to go through a public period. And it's still, last is to be adopted and reviewed, or first reviewed and adopted by the board. And then we're going to submit it into the Vets' portal, and we're definitely going to find five cases, definitely for that one. So there's six requirements, I'll just briefly go through them. Basically, the first requirement is a list of prescriptions of provisions entitled, consider essential in effect, the escape order, reduction of the person workforce, and just completion of such considerations to each position, I don't include it. It also requires a specific prescription or protocol for employer follow, who would issue all that in such treatment, employees and contractors, both new, informed by not limited to facility or organization driven, distribution downloaded, installation of any needed device or technology, software, D-locked office, uh, several, and transfer of office online to New York, all persons inside of its practical workplace. C, the prescription of how employers will protect workers' back-to-back shift of essential employees and contractors in order to control the damage on public access systems and websites. D, the prescription of the protocol that employers are thinking of in order to prepare appropriate changes in positions of employees and contractors, based on various aspects of the situation within the contract. And part two, sufficient to provide these students, who, who said, personally, particularly, completely, strictly qualified, the contractors are in any work shift over a box of months. Such instructions are also supposed to serve for certain programs, like navigation, and to get access in event of emergency declaration. Also, E, prescription of the protocol in effect, employer contractors, obviously, in a non-physical, that's subject for a public health emergency. Some of the, you need to test positive, so, you know, that, which actually sits in the workplace. So the protocols also detail actions to continue, uh, immediately through, it's a factor worker, of any employer contractor known, directly, in fact, in, you know, for the case. You have any commentary, search, and share, uh, putting such employer contractor name up. And a employer's policy available, even if they have employee, student, customer, resident, isolation, or quantity.
Tower goes down, you'd be able to still use it through internet. Your phone has that ability to help with the internet. But again, we would hope that somebody would call 911 for a landline. But our landlines are hooked up to our Wi-Fi system too. That's all integrated. Am I right? We each have an old fashioned landline in some of our offices in an emergency. But you know, our phone systems are now social distancing.
It's all over.
Right. And if you happen to have a network problem down too. So we do have multiple ways to call and alert emergencies.
Right. You know how to take that situation and act like a system? We can take out the office and some plug.
But we can panic.
It's just a tool security, basically like onion, different layers of the victims that we stress. We build the most memorable. And you know, we basically do our drills as the next to God on this. We want to basically have people know their options in case of actual murders. Now, we all did it, right? Fire drills, walking down the hall and accident. What if we rest such as the one behind us? If we block off, what do we do next, right? What do we do after lockdown? We block these, hide in secure space, right? And the bad guy gets in, what's next? So we have to develop these protocols in place so that we're prepared. We also want to empower everyone to do that, any other functions. And I can stress that Altaris and I can share this with all the building administrators. Altaris is providing monthly training, virtual monthly monthly training sessions on any topics that the administrators are going to discuss in any type of treatment. And we're providing that for all our employees.
Is that mandatory or is there an option?
It's an option.
But training is mandatory annually for faculty and we do do that. But Altaris does, they offer tabletop training. We have building safety teams and the district flight safety team. So the buildings do what they call tabletop training where they do scenarios, what would you do, how would you act? You know, what protocols, which would you call? And we're still, you know, we're working on that. Irving is working, kind of like a tree map on where, you know, who does what when? Because you know, when we have different emergencies, and I'll give you an example, when we have the water shuttle, which wasn't, thank goodness, a life or death, right? But we kind of all gathered in my office and we're doing the same thing together. And so we really had to tell our staff and say, in this kind of an emergency, this is your job. All the buses, we do this, you know, those are things we're still trying to find too. You know, with Altaris last year, unfortunately was, I can't remember because we were kind of off of history elsewhere. And the police officer, Greg O'Neil, who is our homeland security liaison through the police department, he came to do the test. He said that these were going around to all the buildings here in Nassau County testing the app. He said, you cannot believe the lack of security and how people have been lapped because of the pandemic. But I know that we've not, I know that we've been really good. I mean, we have interior alarms on certain doors, but now we have multiple exits. We had worked so hard to have this one front of entry and one exit, just in the front door in this building. And then, you know, two at the elementary schools for dismissal and arrival. But you know, now in order to social distancing, we've increased those. But our perimeters are really being locked down during the day. Years ago, we would have custodians propping open the door with a garbage can. Because they didn't want to use the key to come back in now. But we've really eradicated those behaviors, I think. Sometimes we have a door propped open when it's very warm. But you know, we really have to be careful because those are how to hold your huge security is getting in in that way. Of course, things have changed. There's not been one school shooting. I know there was an active shooting in the city, but there's not been one school shootings. But that pandemic is great, right? I think it stays up, right? The numbers are just getting ridiculous. But we're also working on the, again, that was way late last year, the sorry, emergency. It's escaping my brain, Irving. We have the emergency lock site.
All drill.
You're reaching, sorry. Yeah, and we actually now have to find a new site. We already put it up at high school, we put it in the field, we're in construction. And that's where this goes. So that's going to be under construction. So I know Locke had been to previous Altaris, the board had been finding our site with the community. We had worked, we've dealt to, say, Ravens, because why they're building these schools, not the church. You know, we've had the alternative site of Central Avenue High School. But we've been doing it regularly, every night. That was really what it says, it had to be alternative site. So we have to go to the church, so they need to handle that. Yeah, we looked into that last year, but we thought, I can't remember what the Do you remember Jim, what the light drill in the room is not considered?
I'm sorry.
I think that's too close to the building. That's really why. It depends on the emergency, you have to really move further off the campus from their light control. They could be reached as well. Of course, the big problem here is that central office is on the same campus as high school. So you know, it is a recommendation of mine, Jackie, that eventually the board look at. Even if they also have a site. Because if there were an emergency in the state, you'd be elementary school just two events, three parts. So you know, when we looked at that, was one of the things we considered was even if we moved it to protect the building, it's still going to be on a separate, probably different new attack, not a real, new attack. Possibly anything, case, the bank, you know, or something off-site there. The central office could be separated. I think it's totally considerable.
You've got one more question. In having business, how often do you expect something to happen? By immediately exploring, what is it for you, you know, training that you hired to get?
So as the next to God makes, all drills turn on, all drills turn down, school. So that involves at least four lockdowns. They're supposed to give us two drills, the two lockdown drills by the first half of the year. We want to be spread out of the lockdown, but we don't want to be able to keep them grouped together. But we build that much memory for hot. We basically recommend, you know, start, so that, you know, they just find these tools that help the administrators to extract of the drill. And you know, and provide any kind of slides rather than how you probably do it. What's the difference in lockdown or not? Or what's, you know, shelter, fire back. We basically try to guide them with this information. Depending on certain districts, you know, I actually put another two in the county though. So there are these two, a new kind of hours. We do the drills, but there are these two times, build that much memory, build that community. Because you know, we have six staff members that can come to our home or cannot stay on the street. You know, you'll see a one, you do a mock drill, you know, where there's a human lockdown. Maybe a few people start getting nervous and probably it's only a drill, but it's not, it's a drill. Fight, you know, some, something, fight against. It'd be scary, but we're willing to do that. We do have any type of contingency. Luckily, I always do this, I start through the balance of the school. We have awesome, awesome students. Dr. Kraft, you know, with this school. But they can tell you, they're on purpose. They're possibly manipulated. And they actually have, they actually have, I have just a lockdown board that's at least thirty like this. And they're valuable. And I think this was a few years ago, there was a positive I just observed them and I noticed that someone said, hey, you got to go. They're a visitor, but that's, that's positively important. Everyone should go to them, even if they're not staffed fully. Or you know, they should participate, they're not supposed to announce each other. You know, if an emergency is really happening, if you want to make sure that we can give accurate account of personnel that's in location to fresh responders.
So after every drill, the buildings usually have a Google Doc. And they ask people for feedback and then the building emergency response team will be after the drill. So what, you know, we do do training, we're required to do certain at least one training that we do at the beginning of the year. Altaris has given us kind of a webinar training, the basics. They call it the simple six. And we refresh everyone's memory with that. But what Irving is describing is really we learn during the actual drills. When you're sitting in a faculty meeting, you know, or you're sitting through a training, you're learning it, but you're not practicing. So you know, that's really, we are very hands-on and that's why these tabletop activities will what we've done in the past is the consultant from Altaris, we comment, describe a scenario. And then, okay, this is the scenario, they show us, walk us through a video, it's frightening. Because you see an active shooter, what would you do? They pause the video, what would you do next? Who would you call? And so that's, that's done with the each building, emergency response team, which consists of teachers, Jim is on them, administrators, custodian. So it's a variety of staff who sit on those meetings. And so they are, custodian, a variety of staff who sit on those meetings. And so they are the ones, they're key people that are in key positions around the building that are more, you know, highly trained, that just generally take the step.
Thankfully, we have a few students down, it's good to keep up with them, yes. And we'll probably do it and continue that training, so that's very important.
We're thrilled, Altaris, it makes a big difference, and I know it was, you know, possible because we've got the budget. But we're not, the pressure that we felt when all these school shootings started to multiply and so many of them. And we're not, I'm not a police officer, I'm not in law enforcement. And we weren't really sure if we were doing the right thing. So they're not only up on, on all the law enforcement and training us the right way we do and how to behave, but also the latest laws and regulations, which are changing, as you know, rapidly. So it's a real added value to our district. A few years ago, we did a safety forum. I spoke to Greg O'Neil about this when he was here, the Homeland Security Forum. I don't know if any of you remember, we talked about all the different safety issues that we have in the district. And last year, I did talk, suggested that we do that again. So we haven't because of COVID, but I don't want to wait anymore. So I mentioned to Greg and you that we would do that, do it through Zoom. And again, we had Senator Kaminsky, we had Pop Office Res Come, we had different people on the panel. And not only we talked about ourselves, just in general. And you're right, we can't keep up with that. We can't, we have to continue to maintain our safety focus. And we have with our increased security aids, Jackie, you know, manage the budget to not only endorse security aids, we've increased those now during the day because of COVID. And the additional exits and entrances and also the outside doors that we have invested. We've been able to maintain that new budget and we're very appreciative that we have. And of, of, of.
So I wanted to find out, Irving, do you communicate with West Tech as far as your law guys that are here, security guys here? Is there a point person that you check in with them to find out, you know, how's the staff doing here? Do they need any, any kind of workshops that Altaris do to them? Or is that different because of a whole different unit?
No, absolutely not. We express the power, we express the height more than ever. So for West Tech, I do speak to the security guard, I know they're private, a lot of these guys in the car. I'm like, you guys, there's, you know, a lot of work that, you know, that we, we, we conversed. So I was actually going to recommend those that they were speaking in this quality. I saw the eight teams, I believe, over at Avenue Bill. And so we basically, we basically recommended that, came in and expanded with your ancillary staff, you know, not only security, but like the food service staff. Or if you go on a lockdown, you know, I know schools not doing much in the classroom. What if, you know?
No, we do.
Oh, okay.
And we have done drills during lunch. We have done drills during lunch, we've done them during recess, you know, at the elementary schools, which is very concerning. Because the kids are out on the playground and playing cycle. So getting them back into the building, we do. So the monitors are critical. They've been a part, you know, we've trained them several times, beginning of the year. Like Altaris is directly training monitors several times. So not since you've been here, because you're catching up like.
I just think that the professionals, that they're here, people look to them right away as professionals. And of course, they've gone from law enforcement and maybe different law enforcement. They need to be all on the same page. That's why I found that, you know, if we keep them on the same page all the time, with training, so that they're all thinking the East Rockaway way, the way Altaris wants them to think in their buildings. It's a good opportunity.
Yes, I completely agree with you. During monthly Berkeley meetings, we actually, we participate.
The building, sorry, I'm talking in accents.
During the monthly meetings, we basically also stress that to the principals and the and all the administrators, in the board working. You know, the Berkeley meetings are, you know, the Berkeley themselves are, are not, they're not shared to the public. But this is the way that basically get them into that. Basically, they have new questions, they basically get, you know, proper guidance. And we're going to release them to proper doors, you know, that was the issue that came up. There's some confusion, right? So we got to talk to each other. And since I try to serve as a point person, I try to relay all this information to all the schools. You know, where, you know, where the lines of communication are there, that we can be more set.
Yeah, when I said we trained the mother, it wasn't us, it was Altaris. So not only the actual centers and but school, some of the available consultants come and do some of the tabletop training as well. Of course, the is one that's done most of the training as well this year.
No, so the few of you may have just shared, hasn't, right, for me. And then I speak to other districts, that's not within the place. And it's important, at the end of the day, the first responders are going to respond to that emergency threat. So if you want to make sure that there's also monitoring, they know the layout of the school, they know where certain schematics are located. And so, you know, we try to bridge the gap.
Thank you, Irving.
You guys, and you guys are just probably mean, yeah. And I wish you all the best in this upcoming year, with a better year for all of us and your family. And I'm a big sports fan, I'm a big soccer fan, you know, I'm a Barcelona fan, I'm not new to it. And I just want to say, you have young Al Messi or Sean Lannado. Awesome player, right? But they can't do basketball. I'm not afraid. I just want to know that, you know, we're really fair. A lot of, you know, students of this district, we pay about a thousand, you know, whatever they go out, we're going to get them.
Thank you, Irving.
Thank you, Irving, because we have a lot of record. We have a student who was on this one, um, Cosmos. Yeah, he was actually playing on the Cosmos in the fall and he was, he was a huge star.
White cars.
He'll work, you know, he's going to be a big superstar, you'll see.
And I know that's a couple of teen crap. Ah, I done my research.
Open 19 update.
So I wanted to give you the numbers so you have a chart, I can, I believe, and just update everyone. You know, I don't know if people are on the New York State portal, head of school, who did the report card. It's usually a day behind and sometimes, you know, with hectic things and all, the numbers don't always get updated. So I wanted to just summarize where we are at this point, so you can see what we've had in the three buildings. It is, as of today, the portal will reflect these numbers. We added, actually as of yesterday, we didn't have, as you know, another positive staff case, another positive student case today. So that is the total of thirty-one student positive cases, sixteen staff positive cases. What's remarkable though is look at the number of people we have had to quarantine between students, of course, students. So these here, two hundred and forty-three students have quarantined, some of these are doubles. So we've had staff that have been activated twice in some cases and seventy-five staff members. So I said this to one or two of you, our principals really are magicians. Because I'm out there doing it and every day we, I, I want to fix it, but we've, you know, we're keeping our buildings open, but we do not have a huge number of substitute teachers. It's always a challenge, but the principals are able to work it out. And that's a large number of staff members that are there. We're getting better. I did take a walk with Jim on Monday morning because we had a case over the weekend that was a little bit unnerving. You know, we, we want to be able to know that when the teachers are in the restroom or wherever they're eating, that we don't have to contact trace. We have very specific guidelines, we know that people are following them. We say, okay, we'll be following the guidelines, we're even at, you know, less than six feet. For less than, Sunday they told us fifteen minutes, generally they tell us ten minutes. So we moved things around a little bit in the two elementary faculty. We had an elementary faculty room to be ready to open up additional space for the teachers to be in the armory. Now that's, we made some adjustments around the center avenue. And so, you know, at times, some people are a little lax with masks. And when that happens, you immediately become a close contact. And you fill up the app, although they reduce the numbers to ten days, it's still a lot of days. It's still a huge impact on our budget and more importantly, on construction. So we are constantly reevaluating all our spaces to make sure we're just looking at classrooms, to push the teachers a little bit further away from the first row of students, to really maximize the space so that everyone is spaced out and we can say, and a lot of teachers are really getting ready. Nope, I would not post contact to anybody. I stayed here, I did not go. But of course, some cases when kids need physical support or they need to be taken somewhere, especially younger grades, they, you know, they are our close contact, but we're trying to work on minimizing that. So that the impact is less. But again, we've been able to keep the buildings open rather than closing them with that case, which I'm proud of. And I think everybody's done a great job. Jim's done a great job, our custodial staff really has a great routine. So we know, we don't fly down until a day or two later, we know the building's already been cleaned.
That's a lot of people's questions, like what constitutes a close contact? And we got questions, we're not together. Well, how come both classes?
Yeah.
That's the whole point of our safety network, okay? So again, I think you get close, don't worry.
Thank you. It's definitely six feet or if you're six feet or less for ten minutes or more. And again, when we call one person, it's ten minutes. Sunday when I called the hotline, because our people, our direct contacts were not working, the department of health, they told me fifteen minutes.
We go like fifteen down the school. Fifteen, sixteen, plus a half hour.
And again, teachers are being more mindful of leaning in, talking to a student for a minute with masks on, both of them, and then walking. Not sitting and doing the small group where you're a foot and a two away. Happens sometimes still, but that is why, if you are mindful, and the teachers are, a lot of them are very definitive. Nope, I was not, I stayed in the front room, I did not go back to students. And so I wasn't in contact with them and I never take my mask off.
I just got a call from the principal, South Mill, and she said, there was a kid, she has been more testing positive. And she said, you're near, no, very different, because you know that, not to be, I knew, there was no way, it was near, hit. We really don't need to.
How would the coverage is going on at Altaris?
Well, we're going to work on that and check the next year project, trying to be as accurate as anybody else.
It's got to be hard.
And then we're going to try to submit to FEMA for that kind of resource. Try any, and I'll discuss it during the budget presentation. We've had an exit grant as well as FEMA grant and town has said this, how many committees have over staff? So we are going to try and best we can get it to FEMA. That's our.
You know, when somebody can work remotely, which we try to do, for instance, high school math teacher, preschool English teacher, high school tech teacher, some positions can teach remotely, some cannot. But for a math teacher to be out for ten days, well, it's not ten school days, it could usually be about eight or nine days. It's better that the teacher is able to teach remotely, to follow instruction. We still have to cover an adult supervision from classroom, so it still costs us money to cover that class.
Off the top of your head, how many children in the entire prison that are not able to come to work?
That come every day?
Yes.
And we're about a hundred and thirty, well, students. You know what, I'll get you that, because it's changed right now. We have, I put that in the updated number, we'll come back, but many are still staying. So probably under a hundred. Hopefully we will, but I'll get you those exactly.
And not just total number of students in the entire prison?
Oh, about one thousand, one hundred and sixteen, something like that.
So.
Hundred and twelve hundred.
The numbers are really good. I mean, there were many students have positive places at the proximity of the town. And they thought, obviously, they're not going to live with their father and their parents, they must have been in the prison.
And that's why the governor says, is that the numbers in the schools are lower than the numbers in the community. And that's why the schools need to stay. Because they've, the Department of Health has told us this, and I've seen this also reported on the news. But our contact, Dr. Buckman, that's the Department of Health, has said, the contact tracing does not reveal that the spread is happening in the school. So when we identify a case, we shut it down, the kids stay home, the infected person stays home. And it's not spreading even the.
No, this is, this is a safe environment, it's what the rules are, of course. And we have all the proper protocols, they, they catch it, nine out of a hundred, they catch it on green here. And I know we have that spread on anything.
Right.
Again, that just proves our online work.
And that's why it's important to keep the building open.
Hundred percent.
Maxine, okay?
So we, as you know, affected Monday, eleven, school personnel. So, um, we, as you know, effective Monday, um, eleven, uh, school personnel weren't able to, um, obtain a vaccine, and, um, the rollout, as I'm sure you've heard, has been a little crazy, it's not been smoothest. Um, it's all done online, um, so you have to throw multiple different sites and places where you can go. There's a central one for New York State, but then diverting to other places like Rite Aid, there's one for New York City. And it really is a lot of luck as to when you get, um, T.J. said it appropriately, she said, I felt like I won something yesterday when I was able to get my appointment. So, uh, yesterday, there were hardly any appointments, but, um, what do you mind if I say, you got the prize? Um, but today, all, you know, Richard texted me, Jones Beach has hundreds, so.
Yeah, I tried.
Oh, that's awesome.
I'm so glad I know I couldn't do it.
Yeah, a lot of people were able to get it around, um. But there was one site, you know, on the New York State, I have to go. But that's not bad. So, um, we have, I, I went, actually went to CBS yesterday and spoke with two pharmacists. He gave me the contact information, we wrote directly, just like we called a couple of numbers at CBS. We could, you know, if we could forge some kind of a partnership, you know, sometimes you try to do it from the top down and everybody's doing that. Like, he was with his two CBSs in town. He was receptive to it, and he said, they do not yet, CBS does not yet have a Rite Aid that is administered. Not Rite Aids on Long Island, but Rite Aids in New York City are doing, vision work for New York City. So, um, we put a formal letter, after many calls, you finally got the right office, we put in a request. Uh, we also will be reaching out, NYU Langone has forged a partnership with a few school districts. Now they're, they say they don't have the capacity to take on many more, but I already called and reached out to them. We also put in a call to South Nassau, which is now, that's around Sinai also. Um, but people are having success. Um, I would say a lot of people have gotten appointments. Problem is, is, um, more of the people that get appointments, you know, you can choose, but so, it, sometimes it'll come up with fifteen different kinds in fifteen different increments, so you have to work. But sometimes people are anxious and they'll just grab the first appointment, and so, you know, we would like to be able to cover teacher, but they're local, you hire somebody for an hour, that's great, but some teachers go to Suffolk or, you know, they live in Suffolk, so we're gonna do the best that we can. Um, some teachers are taking, you know, sick day to, to get the, um, vaccine. You know, I wish that we could have someone come on site, or at least CBS would know that they would give us ten potions a day if we don't go to the street. So we'll, we'll continue to work on it. Um, I hope it will go smoothly as the days go on, although they just now want to reduce the age to sixty-five from seventy-five, because that's adding another one point to the requirement to be cool. And, um, the governor said today, there is not enough vaccines yet. So, and now all of us are going to need our second dose, which we'll be there on day twenty-eight when we need to prepare.
I have another quick question, so what, what happens if teachers use the COVID vaccine?
Well, it's not mandatory, so it's voluntary.
So there's no issue running from New York City, but it is, you know, primary mandate?
Yeah.
So there's no Florida mandate or anything about teachers having to get it?
We have not, I mean, it would be something I would need to teach our attorneys that, but we do have, like, there are people who are pregnant, there are people who, um, for whatever reason, maybe shouldn't get it, can't get it. Um, and so, I don't know, that's something we zoom into. But, you know, from what I'm hearing, and it is something that I can't really ask people who are vaccinated or not, even though I'll hear that, but it's, I try to see what people want. So, um, you know, we are hearing, and I totally, people are telling us when they're getting their appointment, when they're getting vaccinated, that there's huge, I would say there's huge interest, part of people in the, in the babies. I don't think I've heard of anybody who doesn't want to get it, but I have asked everybody. Yeah, that would be something we would have to, I think, to be, to be able to. Yeah, I mean, district, private, private industry can require, you know, this was on the news quite a bit. And we are public entity, we're not choice, we're different, but I know maybe it's not so.
And I think we are at seven o'clock, so we should break now, uh, work session and go to the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think, at a level three. Good day to everybody. You guys hear this popping, please? Let me get her, let me see if it's colored. You're not for tea, only getting to the first five people.
So do we get two then?
Yeah, I'll get one for the big friend.
How are you?
I haven't seen you in person in a while. You're supposed to. How are you? I'm good. See you coming out for a work session. Guys, very good. That's good. Good? Okay, so welcome to, uh, first budget work session for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, as always, we always start out the strategic plan initiative, which was developed in two thousand and fifteen. Um, and it basically finds the four areas in which we are utilizing, booking areas, um, you say, across the executive. We use these four areas when we develop our budget, they're closely aligned, making sure that we are back in line with the strategic plan. So this year, we only put, um, two additional items in the budget because, um, during the state adoption, they were very clear that there was a mechanism that was included in the state budget amounts that allowed for three different assessment periods. And what those assessment periods would allow New York State to do was could just budget, um, in any category they needed, including state aid for school districts. And so we really trimmed back, um, and really focused in on these two particular areas. Uh, the mental health clinic, we had started mid-year, prior year, we felt it was crucial that we maintain that program, so we're able to support it for the entire year. And then we added the new K six reading curriculum, as well as the professional development associated with that report. All the items were sort of trimmed back and held back, um, with the knowledge that we put in that, uh, we stayed in mid-year, and our goal was to maintain our program. So if the, uh, budget was, uh, can't see the top up there, but it says twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital improvement initiatives. And so each year, we designate certain amount of money, and we worked for many, many years, we get this, um, budget line inside the budget, the operating budget, as opposed to relying on reserves. It's not a good idea that we rely on reserves for things that we need on a regular basis. It's one that, what ends up happening is you end up with tremendous amount of capital progress, capital improvements that needs to be funded, and then we don't have a way to fund them, and we end up with large bonds. So, um, over the last several years, the board and the districts have looked very closely, we get a nice amount of money within the operating budget.
Mrs. Rayo, excuse me, could you just speak a little more directly into the microphone, because, um.
In him, eh?
Yeah, on the, um, live streaming, it's a little difficult to hear.
Sure. Back up.
We got a notification that.
Okay, so.
That's better, thank you, yeah.
All right, so the district-wide, um, improvement that we made is security enhancements, and we implemented a business management system in the high school. And right now, that is under review. Um, we are looking at it a little closer, Shae knows, um, in conversation with vendors. We know we have a simple point of entry, so based on the slight changes that we had to make due to the pandemic, we did go ahead and meet with the vendor again, and is working in some other options to make sure that we have selected the best option in the district. So that is currently under review. The high school, we had proposed painting of the auditorium ceiling in the lodge gym. Both of those have been scheduled for the winter process, which is February. Center Avenue, we, um, proposed the clash of shade basements, um, both purchasers will place. The shades will shift on January seventh, and once they are received, we will schedule, um, installation here by our district staff. Uh, floor drains involve the boys and girls lavatories and electronic signs, they go to Center Avenue and Main Avenue. Um, we've gotten our quotes, we've done our diligence, and purchasers are expected to go up this week. Um, and hope that once we get the items that we will schedule, and we are getting behind. Typically, we do some of these items during the summer. The summer, our focus was strictly on the V H plan and preparing our schools, uh, to accommodate, uh, the social logistics required and, and stuff like that. So we are getting behind, but I am pretty sure we're making all of it aligned by all of these projects by the end of the school year. So what is the budget development process? Basically, I stop the role of the budget, in which I increase current budget for contractual costs, which is I look at all the salaries, I look at the contract, the contracts that we negotiated with each of our units. I roll all of the, uh, staff, I make the current staff. I roll one for their staff movement and for any increases that are inside the contract. I categorize our employee and teacher retirement system based on the salaries. Health insurance increase based on the total combined to us at the, uh, December, I think we need. Health insurance is done on calendar year, so, um, through, uh, six months of knowledge and six months of experience. So I give a budget for the first six months of twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But what will happen on January first, twenty-two, is here to be determined, so I have to estimate based on, um, history. Uh, tradification CPI is based on the May CPI, which obviously is several months away. Again, it's based on, uh, prior usage. Uh, most of these service increases are taken into account, we do not have specifics yet, I anticipate getting there over the next few weeks, but I have in fact rolled, um, with an estimate. And then the added institution increases to say that, um, the increases have not been determined, but we do in fact do it all over. Um, anticipating what the increases are, and then, um, we just point them out. It's important for us to get a good idea early on to where we stand with the budget and where we, um, so we do this before we have all our numbers. Some of our numbers, we won't even have until after the budget is adopted, which can see with transportation. We meet with all the administrators, we review the building and department budgets, and, um, I expect to have that done by the end of this week. We have one department left, so we're in pretty good shape. Um, consideration is then, um, given to new enhancements and programs aligned with that strategic plan. And it will be discussed when, once I'm gone, meeting the building, um, departments, building departments. Um, I will meet with superintendent, extension administration, and they will review, um, all of the buildings. And then departments give me wish lists or suggestions on what they'd like to say. And then we sit and we discuss it, and we get a better picture as to what our budget is going to look like in the future, and if there would be any, um, ability to increase funding, or perhaps realign some, um, things that are currently in the budget to increase, um, regaining enhancements. So that will only be done in the next couple of weeks. And then we develop a list of proposed capital and technology projects, which will be discussed on February second work session. Um, we have a very extensive, um, technology replacement plan, we finalized that last year. We tweaked it a little bit, um, due to COVID nineteen, and so, um, Mr. Rouse and I did be looking at it again. And, um, we're in a pretty good position here, and so we will, we will be ready to discuss, uh, that next, um, budget work session. So what are the major budget factors that we need to consider? Well, there's the potential loss of state aid, as I said, uh, earlier. When the budget was adopted, they told us that they have three assessment periods in which they can in fact reduce our state aid in a year. Um, there was two criteria, and we looked at their revenues to see if it varied by more than one percent. So if their revenues came in lower than one percent, um, the total amount that they use when they build a state budget, that would be with the authorization to go ahead and reduce the budget across the state. And we all know that the tax revenue, um, sales tax revenue has decreased significantly here in New York. Uh, the other criteria was, uh, if the increase in expenditures for the state, um, increased by more than one percent. I don't have any input on that, um, I can't speak to whether or not Aaron Stamm will have their overall budget has increased by one percent. Can't speak to that. As of now, I have not been rolled the visiting budget, uh, state aid decrease, but the last assessment period ended September third, so which is state. Um, the other consideration is our tax levy cap, which again, you need to be teaching every district across state of New York. There are multiple factors, some, sometimes I say four, sometimes I say five, because, uh, BOSI's capital improvements was added last year, so it's five now. The only one that is consistently across the state of New York is the CPI, that has not been determined. I'm still waiting for the separate CPI, which should come out in the next two weeks. And then I will have a CPI for the county of New York, twenty, and one of the five factors used when we build a tax gap, let me. Uh, the capital, let's see, we have the tax-based growth factor, that is determined by the name of state real property, and that has been determined already for each school district across one, uh, across the New York state. So we have one, we should have CPI in the next two weeks, and we'll have two. State aid, we won't know, building aid, we won't know for another couple of weeks. Um, the, um, cost for, uh, BOSI's, the district's portion of the BOSI's capital improvements, we have not been told yet. I expect that in the next couple of weeks as well. And then in the service in the district, nothing like any to borrow, if the district is obligated to, um, has something determined yet, and of course, I am probably don't need, definitely don't need to borrow some funding to, uh, finance the bond budget to the local council. We do have several, four, I have five, and I really don't pay it on a regular basis when we receive them. The other factor is that, um, impact on budget, of course, are contractual salary costs, self-pension, self-insurance costs. The most of all, we know the health insurance, we have a good idea of the pension cost, we want to be, uh, we do have a few unsold contracts for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so that's still variable, that has yet to be determined. And then because there is the COVID nineteen pandemic, which is then, um, creating a little bit, uh, expenses that we're not allocating or anticipating who were born, and that has still been going on for the year after the, uh, the budget. So those are key variables that we have to determine. So let's talk about the COVID nineteen pandemic. On the nineteen, twenty school year, when we closed in early March, we needed to close expenditures. Um, several things did not go off, we did not do us from the courts, um, so there was money not spent there, there was a lot of funding, um, that was not spent, uh, supervision, um, so that money. Uh, so that money to be, in the year we closed it, all the absolute emergency expenses were authorized. And all of the unspent funds would be along with potential loss of state aid in 2021 school year. And we did that to avoid reducing any program. Many school districts were not lucky enough, and they had, or we had a new program in 2021 school year. We felt that we were in a good enough position in which we could potentially handle any kind of state aid cuts. Uh, because it will be under 20% and we will be properly prepared to fund that to get our overall product for 2021 school year with no negative impact. For the 2021 school year, when we built the budget, we did not anticipate um, barriers needed for students and staff. Um, additional P P, additional cleaning products required. We need more cleaning products because we're cleaning the day. It's the cleaning day and the day now, we're cleaning all day long in bathrooms and stairwells and door handles. These are things that we're not dominating yet, it's a lot of additional costs there. Um, additional custodial staffing. We were very creative here in the Strato School District. We are utilizing our staff for our rounds crew to assist in the cleaning as opposed to hiring additional staffing. But we do have additional staffing if we were required to hire substitutes that we are using midday to help with the cleaning. We also are using additional transportation vehicles because there is reduced capacity. We can't fill a regular bus. We now have the children seated, um, we want to proceed unless they're siblings. So for our contracted buses, what used to be one ride, one bus, may now be two buses. So these are costs we did manage this way. However, we have really worked hard to make sure that we could absorb this by taking some other avenues. We've done a good job there. So let's talk about sources of reimbursement. There are a couple of sources of reimbursement for additional COVID-19 expenses the district has incurred. One of them is to take headstand COVID-19 grant. So money was provided to the town headstand through the Federal Care Act, which approved earlier in 2020. And so town headstand was given, each district was given an opportunity through the town headstand to apply for a grant. Um, and agreement with the town headstand, this grant is on the upcoming board agenda next week. Uh, we did that apply, and we were approved. Uh, the grant covers expenses incurred and all which we see through December 31st, 2020, so it does not cover anything after the rest of the year. Um, we have prepared all the paperwork. We covered everything that's necessary to get our reimbursement. And the total expenses that we have requested is 120,370,000 dollars. Um, and as I said, and I continue to say, um, when we prepared the year for school reopen, we were really, really um, having sent the cost to the residents and the fact that this was not in the budget. And so we really took a closer look at what could we do? How could we meet that requirement? And how could we do the best possible things? And so we, we did a pretty good job, 120,000 dollars, we did a good job. Um, and it does appear, and most of them will be reimbursed by the town headstand. For many, it's not headstand reimbursement process, so we're much quicker than the cleaning process. The grant unfortunately will not cover any additional expenses for payroll or additional staffing, which we do have. Uh, and recruits. We needed to rent desks, um, because we used a lot, we were looking on the bus for seating for students, then we asked where to go, everybody is going that direction, we did use small tables. Uh, we could no longer do that, so some of our classrooms, we don't have no seating. So we were lucky enough, so there's had additional desks. We were lucky enough to get a very discounted, uh, pay from them, and they lent us their desks. So those were the lucky number. TEEPA money is another source of reimbursement for expenses for COVID-19. So money to set aside with the expenses incurred from March 2020 through September 31st, 2020. So everything ends as of January 1st. Um, the district required this plan, um, and reimbursement for expenses is not covered by the town headstand. They would be requested through the E M grant, which is going to be basically off their own expenses. Um, reimbursement, even if they take at least one more year. Um, they will not reimburse without a doubt, with 70% of what the cost is. So most of what we get, we really allocated everything to the town headstand grant um, that was covered within their outlets. And like only what was not covered by town headstand, it was given. Um, so we will proceed with that. A filing probably in the lead to, once we get a final approval from the town headstand. That was COVID-19 relief package assigned back in December 21st. It's a 900 billion dollar package. In that 900 billion dollar package, it's 54 billion dollars to K2 Public Schools. That's four times the amount cast in the Federal Care Act, which gives out the 1 million dollars from New York State. So we got 1 million dollars. Although it's that perhaps we get 4 billion dollars. But again, it's up to the government of New York to distribute that money. Um, we do not have any particulars at this moment. Um, central state budget is still a major concern. Asking additional federal aid to help close the state budget gap. So although this money is here, we're still very, very concerned that we may see a reduction in state aid. So we keep that in mind as we build this budget. And we expect additional information on how state will ensure this money, how it would impact public schools once the state budget is proposed, which can probably be in January. Um, we'll get a better idea. When the care funding was provided to New York State, um, each school district was given certain kind of money for the pandemic. What the governor did was he gave us, I don't know off the top of my head, but it was something like 112,000 dollars for care funding that came from the federal government. And then he was quick, and then he gave us a pandemic adjustment, which reduced our overall state aid by that exact dollar amount. So ultimately, the money that we got, we used the state budget. Um, so we really saw nothing more than we would have seen in a regular basis. And then there was no increase. So it was okay. My data is not the same, the same way that the government handles it this year. Uh, but it's a lot more money, so we have to step forward. This is the honestly feeling. Um, I would be thrilled if we got the same amount of state aid. And that is, I don't know if you agree with me. I've put a lot of time and effort into the budgets. Um, and watching out of the budget, and I really am not thrilled to a point where we can improve or enhance our budget, our program. But I would be thrilled that we would maintain our budget if they would just keep on state aid plan. So that's my, my hope. So what have we done now? So health insurance increases. Um, as you can see, they're going up and down. Significant increases between 2016 and 2018, and so significant drop. That significant drop in 2019 was them using reserve funds. They had extra money, extra funding, we talked about reserves along. They had an international plan, and so that was represented, they were putting it down. And that's exactly what they get over the last three years. And they were putting data down with reserves. What does that mean? Means that going forward, we may see the numbers shoot right back up again. Because they won't have that money to offset their, their revenue. So again, it goes up and down, up and down. You can see one year, it was supposed to be 6% increase. That was a significant increase in one year. Um, TRS contribution weight. It's been pretty, you know, up and down between 1% and 2%. 1% is, is a lot more than 1% because it's also on increased hours. Um, this year, they're saying the interest rate is between 9.5% and 10%. It's going to be right around where we are now. So we should see a slight increase in our teacher retirement system budget line. So what means our costs is this, difficult. Well, what if we have to do a full amount of revenues? Um, it's left several years here, and I know it's getting a little crowded. Each year gets more and more crowded. So wanted you to take a look at the issue on the tax law, tax cap law went into effect. And that's what this is. Tax cap went into effect in 2012, during school year. You can see how a kid's dying tax, but the cap, depending on the right next time, is a run increase. And they're going up and down, and this is extremely difficult to predict. Um, and it's so hard to build a budget and plan in the future when you don't know what the future holds. Especially in New Orleans. Um, I've been in this since a long time. Being restricted to a 2% tax level cap makes it very difficult to plan in the future. Um, we've done a really good job here in Stratoey. I hope to continue that. But I'm happy to say it is a challenge, especially with U C state aid increases going up and down. One year to 6.8, and yet next year is 0.67. It's huge. It's just ridiculous. And then it goes back to 4.9 and drops down again 200%. Um, this makes our job just a little bit more difficult here for the education. So what's our tax level cap forecast? The 2021 school year, we had a 2.24 tax levy. With 686,741 increase issue wide. CPI cap for 2021, 22, at this time, this is only using 11 months, it's at 1.17%. Using calculations, pretty much keeping it flat, only the tax base growth factor, which I saw that earlier. Um, it looks like our tax levy increase will be at 2.68% on 841,541 increase in taxpayers. Again, the increase in tax debt is primarily due to the increase in tax base growth factor, which is determined by the name of state real property. And it's based on working model, which is basically the improvements to the properties within these property school district. Here is your tax cap calculation estimate. This is a nice little simple formula that we were trying to use. We started out with the tax levy for the current year. We modify by the tax base growth factor, that is, it's getting higher than in the past. And that's where the base increase comes in. Um, we then use pilot. We're still working, we try and get the information on pilot. So you'll see the pilot for the current year, pilot for next year. This is, is flat, kept it all flat because I don't know. Um, then we need to take into account capital local expenditures. What is that? That is state for building aid, it's actually building, which is part of state aid. And reduce that number by the debt service, which is money to expect for any kind of bonds. And um, any kind of capital improvements for BOSI's. And then the difference is what they consider the local expenditures. So again, you'll see, bottom of the equation, bottom of the equation, I kept it flat because I'm not 100% sure of what our revenue is going to be, what our capital improvement cost will be for BOSI's, and what our ultimate debt service will be. But I think the debt service will not go up. We will be flat, or we'll be very close to where it is. Um, a goal here, what we do the bond, is to not see a significant impact to taxpayer. And we're going to hopefully use that. Um, and then, so you allow the road back, we see it down at 1.0117, that's at 1.17 CPI. Again, that will change, and hopefully we'll know that in a couple of weeks. Um, so a million, a pilot, and a CPI still gets to the challenge. So any of you who have been looking up the city here, since it's been passed four years, knowing that I've gone on, on, on like a broken racket, not using reserves. Um, the beginning of my term here, we're using well over a million dollars in reserves uh, to offset our operating budget. And that is something that is not recommended. Um, so over the last four years, we reduced our business reserves by over 900 and 19,000 dollars from the 2016, 17 school year. Reserves can be used as a source of revenue, but it should only be used to offset spikes in certain areas during times, or during times of financial crisis. Um, if you use it to fund programs that are going to be recurring, when you hit a financial crisis, you will not have reserves. Um, so um, we were really cognizant of this, and more of education agree. And so we really made it sort of effort to get off of reserves so that if we should have a pain in the financial crisis, we would have money in reserves to help offset some of the costs and help with the main reduction program. And so we will be positive about that. And so we're really in shape here. We'll see our balance, or I cannot go to a good spot. And I hope that that will carry us until we're there. Until we can come to terms. So part of our accomplishments was increasing technology support. Technology support, especially for the hardware replacement, is now inside the operating budget. Most of it is inside the operating budget at this point in time. Um, we've reduced our dependency on technology reserves. We are still using it, um, but it's gone down to 170,000, 200,000. But if you look at our technology plan, which we built and review on next work session, you'll see that it is a very robust planning. Um, technology needs have grown tremendously over the past seven years, and yet we've been able to contain them inside our operating budget where it belongs. Because it is here every year of the past. Um, the other thing that we reduced is our reliance on capital reserves um, for capital projects and plant maintenance. We didn't have any money inside our operating budget for those smaller capital projects and plant maintenance. Although that is inside of the budget, we don't rely on the capital reserves to fund small projects. With that being done, we were able to allocate 6.2 million dollars to offset the bond projects, the large projects that we needed down here. Um, so that reduced 6.2 million dollars of borrowing. And, and, and that's where capital reserve plan really should be about. Um, finding money, putting money there if we have money left over in anticipation of improvements for our libraries, the facilities. There's always improvements to facilities. We all know that in our homes. And so that's where capital reserve budget should be allocated for. It should be used for day projects. And then a bond rating was upgraded in August of 2017. And these all good things in the budget for the district is put us in a very good place. So that is the conclusion of my presentation for this evening. Uh, February 2nd, we will hopefully have the governor's proposal, which comes out later in January. We'll review what he's asking for. We'll talk about capital projects that we would like to adjust for 21, 22 school year. We will go over the technology hardware replacement plan and the technology budget. And we'll talk about any kind of reserve propositions. They all want to be done well in advance, so they're, they're advertised with, well, for our budget production. Now on March 9th, we will start to go over the most significant expenditures, and we'll make a final decision on the reserves. On the 17th, we'll go over any kind of district initiatives or changes um, off of our budget. And at that point, you should have the adopted budget, which is usually due on April 1st. Uh, and so we'll review all of the revenue and where it is standing. In the 20th, we will adopt. The 11th, we will come on budget hearing, and then on 18th, we will vote. The date I still don't know, but the vote will be in person. That decision is not remain or it will be gone now and has to be watched. Are there any questions? Um, thank you.
Great job, Jackie.
Thank you.
Amazing accomplishment by reducing the dependency on reserves.
This year has been very well here.
Great job, Jack. It was very interesting.
Yes, thank you, Jack. You know, the time we're talking to a few colleagues, it's a very anxious word, I know it's anxious. We present you this law, of course, it's a process that you've developed over the years that works. It's worth working on this again. Thank you. Okay, so now we have a update on New York State school guidance.
So, um, last week, the governor, um, had a press conference when he started to talk about the rollout of the vaccine. And, um, there was really, there's not been new guidance, but, um, basically uh, because of the positivity rate has been going up on Suffolk and Nassau County. Uh, Nassau, Suffolk County was above 10% toward the end of the holiday break. Nassau County was approaching 9%, it's 8.6, 8.7. Today it was at 8.37, the average was 8.4. The government made a statement that, uh, the governor, I'm sorry, made a statement that we can keep schools open if testing in schools shows that we're below the community average. Um, when, when counties reached 9% or above. Now originally, um, when schools started and over the summer, when they had a plan for school, he had said that if an area reached 9%, schools would close. But because what we were talking about in the beginning is that schools seem to be safe places. We seem to be maintaining, um, low transmission rates, even though there is a higher transmission rate in the community, the rate inside the school is very low, much lower than that in the community. So, um, we, we've not heard much more, although the micro cluster, yellow, red, silver guidance is still in effect. We've not heard of any of the communities being identified in our area as yellow or, or red or orange. So we know we're prepared for testing if we had to. But, um, even though the numbers have gone up, that's not happened. So, um, I believe that we can stay open for in-person learning amid the pandemic. Um, if we, you know, again, if our numbers within the school are lower than the, that of the surrounding community. And, um, the governor has basically left it up to, um, schools to make that decision. So if we do get to 9%, we can close or we can stay open and we can do testing. So again, we've not received any formal guidance. This really was from an article and from a press conference. Um, I do, maybe I'm missing it, but we usually do get reports. Uh, we get emails, we get guidance from the state and we, uh, we do not. So again, he is very desirous of keeping our schools on in-person learning rather than switching remotely. Um, but he's going to leave it up to us. So, um, I guess we said before with our numbers, we're doing relatively well. And, um, I think it stays that way. And we'll see if there'll be anything further that would be in right. Um, I'm glad that Nassau County has not reached 9%. Um, Suffolk did go above 9%, but I'm not aware of any districts that have shut down or that have actually engaged in any large scale testing yet. Um, except for the two districts that were in the zone, Tennessee and Raybeck. And that was before, and Lawrence, and that was before the repeal. So, um, that seems to be where we stand now. Um, with regard to testing, um, you know, we weren't prepared. Uh, we didn't get our LSL, limited service lab certification. So, uh, if we were identified, we would be ready. We contracted with the company ATC. Um, and we were just kind of waiting to see if that would happen. Um, what we've noticed, and I will give our, our ERTA meeting president sitting in our audience tonight some credit, is in our weekly meeting, Gail Byer had asked, could we do testing anywhere in the schools because people are having trouble finding a test. Um, and this is really affecting our staffing. So, you know, we have the formal contact tracing where you're definitely exposed contact. You definitely have to quarantine. We confirm that with the Department of Health. But there's a lot of people who are concerned. They may have been exposed, they want to get a test. Um, they're, they do stay home until they get a test, even though it's not official. And of course, the guidance has changed now. Um, you saw my letter that I sent you in the board update. Um, the FF-CRA Families First Report Virus Response Act, uh, the federal act that gave protections to employees has expired. And now what's, what we're left with is, um, the New York State law, which requires that any employee receive a government ordered quarantine directive in order to be paid for their quarantine. Otherwise, they will need to use their sick days. Um, what we've been doing is we, uh, people will be get, will get, go to their doctor. Their doctor will tell them, um, you know, you may have been exposed. Let's stay home for, uh, get a test, wait until the test comes back. Um, if it comes back negative, you can go back to work. Um, but those days again are impactful to us. So today we wrote, uh, we were in touch with the Department of Health last week and this week. Um, pretty much we called the Nassau County Department of Health, asked if we could, can we test outside of the zone initially? And we get tests from the Department of Health. Our nurses had agreed, we have the laboratory license. The Department of Nassau County Department of Health said, ask the state. The state said, ask the county. So we proceeded further and we didn't get a contact at the state. And we submitted a letter today formally requesting tests. So that, and again, we put this in motion, but of course, we'd like to afford to award with this. It would make it easier for our employees to get tests. They wouldn't have to necessarily stay home. The state would be providing us with the rapid tests.
I would.
Yeah, the states are the nasal swab rapid test. And ATC, the company that we contracted with, because we, you know, we had, they were available. They do the PCR testing, although many people feel it's more accurate. It does take several days to get, it takes up to three to five days. So I reached out again to, um, the company Baseline Health, which one of our village trustees is affiliated with, Mr. Philo. And, um, they were really inundated with, um, with requests by districts and by companies, uh, by entities, municipalities to do testing. But, um, he's going to get back to me. And they do both the PCR test and the rapid test. And again, if we could offer this starting at least to our employees um, out, again, outside of the micro cluster initiative, I think it would just give more people peace of mind, give them an answer right away and, um, and keep attendance for us. So we'd really like to do that. And we're hoping that, um, either Baseline Health or, and or the New York School Department of Health will improve with the testing. According to their guidelines, we should be able to do, uh, LSL allows us to do, um, community screening. It actually allows us to do it anywhere in the community. If we wanted to do it in the firehouse, our nurses could do it. But we would do it on our site. Uh, Mr. Philo said, uh, they do have mobile units that, they have trailers. But he, uh, you know, he asked if they would, because they're short on personnel and units, that they would be able to come onto the premises and we would be able to provide them enough space to do testing, starting at school. And then we, so, so at this point, what we're asking is to go forward with employee testing.
Are the teachers leaving this? Does the teacher leave? Someone's paying for this?
Actually, um, I will give the other credit. She's someone that asked, could we do testing? Could we offer testing for teachers, at least for the teachers? Again, it would be optional, would be available if people wanted to take it down. It's very hard to get a, very hard to get tests, as I'm sure some of you know.
At least there's every commentary or question.
No, um, the only thing would be, um, you know, if the nurses needed some overtime to enter the data to do, you know, that's, we're still, we're still not clear about entering the data because entering the data to the Department of Health and giving the results during a micro cluster event is a little bit different than doing it just as screening testing. So we're still working that out. But, um, Mr. Philo's company, NATC, they take, uh, track. So it would be, uh, a lot outside of their, which is not the healthiest thing to do.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like that.
Again, it would be optional, it would be available for people who wanted to take. I certainly would want to get a test more frequently. I mean, they tell you on, on the commercials, the public service announcements say, get tested and get tested often. Well, we can find it, but we know how hard that is. And it's an imposition. People have families and they're at home, they need to rest. They can't be online, as she said, they're doing three hours of waiting for a test. So I'm, I'm hoping that we.
You had a COVID-19 emergency.
Once we had, I did go over that.
That's what I thought you said.
Yeah, I thought it falls into my site. When I told the problem, this problem will be posted on the website.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
I'm the grant.
I'm the grant.
Grant, you have to approve.
So the board, so one of the resolutions, I think, to tend to, we would be going to, um, pass that and to also we have a test to the fact that we're not seeking reimbursement for those expenses right in the garden.
Erin's Law.
And ask Mrs. Tech to speak a little bit about the new law that we need to implement.
Okay, um, there is some information in your packet. Um, basically, I would share information that's just been logged into this, um, very important and a very sensitive topic to discuss. So, um, in August 2018, the New York State, in the 37th state, have to sign Erin's Law into legislation. Uh, it requires public schools to teach sexual and exploitation prevention that means students who are engaged, will be, um, the law, in some states, is legal. In New York State, it's as big as a tree. Um, the need for Erin, Erin, who's a vibrant activist, now she's worked for more than decades on issues and other students and children, but also parents and teachers in New York State. Schools to identify sexual abuse, um, and provide awareness, assistance, referral, and research information as well, and children's safety, we're going to provide that potential abuse. So in September 2020, um, the state worked and did some research, uh, that is being opened that are domestically appropriate to prevent, you know, resources, um, against these devices. Mr. Barr and Mr. Yolene, and I, one of those things really, um, what led some of the options and things that can or, um, delivering this instruction towards people. So, um, there's opportunity in our profession, but there's also opportunities in social, for students, for students to be able to shift right now from sex to sex, um, that's a little virus protection. And sex also has conditional program that relates to. So, um, that is what the government has seen. But again, you have to share it, and you question things like that. Letting know that there, it's still be there.
It just, uh, again, the young funded mandates now. This is another one of them that, um, goes without. We're left with the fact of trying to implement this and how to implement it. You've got to put it in, then you've got to train the teachers to be able to do that. You know, health is not given every year. Um, you know, social work is no good work all the way up to the 12th grade. Um, you're working primarily in elementary schools. So it becomes burdensome now. So do you, uh, are you working with just Mr. Borst and the boards at committee work on this?
Right now, Mr. Barr, as you clearly have been discussing, we're completely to help professional and take it forward and then go ahead and have a better decision. And so, uh, we do have to share, we've been strictly managed also in front of all our teachers. We're aware.
When, when does the law, don't you think?
It's supposed to be implemented by any of this school.
At this school?
Yeah, yeah. No work for you for board.
And like I said, we are rushing to make sure that everybody's to share the failures and report as well and provide the resources.
And it's a very sensitive topic that people don't necessarily just wake up tomorrow and start teaching about it. We do need training and understanding of it. We need, what are the strategies for, you know, what are the strategies and the tools? And so teachers need to be trained. This is very difficult here to add on to teachers' plates. We tried to avoid adding on, you know, we had our reading program. Um, and there are certain things that have to be done, but in terms, and this has to be done. But, um, you know, it does dovetail nicely with our mental health committee, but we put a lot of those things on hold because it's just so much that people can take on right now.
Well, I think you should keep that in consideration that the board, you know, sure, as we talked about this, is that we don't want to push programs folk just for the sake of pushing the total. We want it to go for the lifetime and it's supposed to be, it's a tension, it should be so. If it takes us a little longer, it takes us a little longer. So, you know, just want everybody to feel that there's no pressure because we have a time here. Given to us by a young fund and then, if the funds were there, let's, let's get it done. They're not there. We'll do the best we can when the time's right.
I, I don't want to be critical of the state, but you know, we, um, we've had, Mona mostly has been, experiences tremendous frustration with the vaccination. It's apropos because it's the way sometimes things operate. Is that the, um, you know, vaccination requirements, not COVID, but just regular childhood vaccination vaccinations. Um, there were, they, you know, the religious exemption was eliminated. And so there was a requirement that even children who were on over the construction had to be immunized. And so some parents were not necessarily following up. And so there was a deadline given for even the remote students. And now this is the third time. We have notified parents. Mona has notified parents. We have a couple of parents. We sent a letter home. We've actually shut off students, because they are remote students. We've shut off their access as of a Friday. And then Monday, we get, um, a notification from the state saying that it's been extended again. They wait until after. And so something like this to not, you know, to delay it for a few months would really make sense. And I don't know if they will come out with that, but it's sometimes very frustrating. but it's sometimes very frustrating the way things are constructed. But thank you, Mona, for being here. It is an important topic, but it's, it's a delicate topic that has to be handled. If I could just go back to something that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, when we were talking about the Coronavirus Relief Act, and you all may have received this, and I know that Mr. Popis and Mr. Kimitao are both legislative and government relations board liaisons, but, you know, school boards, you, I hope you get emails, because they give the NISBA updates, so really very helpful now. Although they didn't give a lot of information about the $900 billion stimulus package, they did kind of dovetail in the fact that, you know, they are a huge advocacy organization for state schools, as we know, and they encourage districts to appoint what's called an advocacy liaison. And this, says this position provides you with a direct link to NISBA's advocacy efforts, and it's an important interface for sharing legislative information with board members as an advocacy liaison, who have the opportunity and tools to leverage NISBA's governmental relations resources to accomplish your district goals. I know prior experience is needed, it's obviously kind of another role for a trustee to take on, but I will send him the information about it this Friday, and, you know, I guess he probably become more informed, rather than just regular updates, is having a little bit more direct contact with their advocacy and legislative efforts.
Is it because of the updates, or something was there, or is it something we can draw on, or just resources?
To become that role, it says you, NISBA encourages each district to appoint the advocacy liaison, the position provides a direct link, consider that, give you a district a direct contact, so the perks of being an advocacy liaison include, the first to receive invitation to lobby days, district federal legislative visits, board member volunteerism, newsletters specifically for advocacy liaisons, opportunities to attend NISBA advocacy events, for approval, and detailed information to bring your board on NISBA advocacy activities.
Yeah, that, that's your name a little over there. Should we show it?
Yeah, that's it. I'll send it over the update with the link, so if you're interested. No, it's just another way, because it, as you're saying, we're getting unfunded mandates, and it's happened all the time, we're not getting a fair share from the federal government, and it does represent us well.
I think that's on the, that's what we said for the conference.
You did, yes. For the conference.
Does that have to be just one of us, or is it taken on the whole board? And all, they'll be updated, all get the extra, or is that we just talk about it? Who'd be worried about that?
I don't know, they say they encourage us to appoint one advocacy liaison.
Okay, yo, if you want to do it. Just a matter...
I'll send the information this Friday, you can look at it, and then you can let us know, and reach out.
Thank you, yes. Okay, your law policies?
Okay, so the first one we have is the mission statement and goals, which we looked at at the Board and then at the House Committee, we looked at it again yesterday. When looking at it, you can see that we have added in our current mission statement. And we also added in fourth bullet point, that states utilizing distributed resources and programming can help that, that can go now if possible. Looking at our goals, we added in number six and seven. And one. And one. Yes, and one. Again, making sure that we're taking into account, although we are still working on equity, inclusivity, and diversity policy, that we're incorporating that into all the processes that we're, you know, like, we are reviewing.
Yeah, I love number six, on the goals, differences were, they seem strange, but they were very, very celebrated, and what was it, what makes it, something that you need, we mentioned that, but I think it's still striking, great story. Great.
I don't have a work in that statement, but yeah. And I'm sure that we review this, I don't know.
Also, Lisa, you got managed to get in touch with Syntax about possibly moving that to ground?
I did, and I knew, I had feeling this was going to be a concern, because Lee worked with Syntax designing, redesigning the new website, and because of their design features and how they structured the website, she said it would be limited by the homepage design. The web team could do a title, but believes they can put the mission statement under the district name at the top, but it would just be a really small font, it's like, so I asked her to try it out, so we can see what it looks like, at least it would be up there, and then we could keep it larger at the bottom. But to move that whole nice large black, where we have it at the bottom, up to the top, doesn't fit the actual web design.
If we were to keep it on the bottom, because it could be, could it at least say mission statement? Doesn't say that now.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
If it defines what the mission statement is?
Yep.
That would be great.
Yep.
And then the vision statement?
We asked her to, we asked her to add that in as well.
Be able to get that vision statement on there too, right? Not necessarily that part, but...
Yeah, we asked her to please add a caption title to the text of the mission statement, and then also, you know, so it will...
Great. Even on dropdowns, if we could put that vision statement on there, dropdown menu on the top, you know, the board, whatever, if you're on a slight, like, putting, and I, I think that sometimes when you have these policies, especially if you have a mission and a vision statement, they really go quite a ways, so if they're not at least looked at somewhere that somebody can see, find it, that they're working on. So that's why I'm asking for the website to be that kind of source.
Yep. It's there, but we are, work on it, but I think the idea of a town is good, under the Board of Ed Town, add another, you know, mission and vision.
Right. Great. Okay.
Okay, second one is student learning standards and instructional guidelines. And this policy has to do with the developing of quality education program designed to prepare all students in college and work fully ready. There were just a couple of minor changes, if you turn to the second page. Number looking at the district administration staff will be added by the following at the end. Number two, we've added some language about reviewing progress for this on an annual basis. And number three, we've added in equitable, to again, make sure that we are reflective of the equity, inclusivity, and diversity policy. However, Lisa, I think your question, because we do have a cross-reference of the equity, inclusivity, and diversity policy, but we haven't adopted that yet?
Right.
We're gonna need it in that one.
Right. Yeah, we can't really officially put it there, right, since this is still a draft.
So do we want to push this forward at the beginning, or?
Yeah, this one can absolutely push forward. We're just trying to, we can add it. That's something the board doesn't need to, like, that's a change we can make, with how we're having board, we're not, but just to go back to mission and vision, this is something we had adopted on the day.
Very cool.
Thank you, Weston and Pete, for everyone for helping our health, and for the work we do this way. Take it ready. And next one is library materials section. And this has to do fairly with library material selection, and we're very self-explanatory. A couple of changes to this policy, if we're looking at number six and seven, those were additions to include in the body of lecture, the whole, characters and settings, to reflect original, and would this meet up with student body and country as a whole. And seven, promote the understanding and appreciation of culture, class, minority, race, ethnicity, and other differences that contribute to diversity. Those were taken into addition, again, definitely a lot of the, the difference.
Great.
So, you know, you can see how that, that one helps drive a change, so I know.
Yeah, it is a lot. That was the first, if you guys remember, the first webinar I had gone on, when I put it back, that was the biggest thing I had done. When the board looks at these things, they have to look across the board, the law policies, such a rough hand, to ensure that you're going to make this across everything. So we're doing great, Paul, as you say.
And the last one we have is teaching about cultural issues.
Sorry, present...
This is Pete's, how, how, yes, this is, yes. We also have, yeah. Yep. Okay, so please, how to think my action as well? I don't have everything marked up. I think that we just got one line that we can add, that was not necessary in the policy. And that was it. We didn't really get to change anything here. We removed, it had sadly had in the second paragraph, economic integrity of the district and values, we took, uh, that portion out. Yes, and just have the, that district.
The red is what we, the red is what we added, and then we crossed out the American.
Oh, no, we did that one, we're talking about that.
Oh, do you remember that?
Yes, I think we, we did, we did many, many changes. Yeah.
It was mine.
Yeah, we removed the line that said, in number one, such issues shall be neither sought nor avoided.
That's true.
We just felt that was not a necessary line for that one, as well. I'm going to move to that. And we added in the second paragraph, where it said, therefore, the board establishes the following guidelines for teachers to follow when presenting, we added for discussing controversial issues.
Most of the...
The red definitely goes. And that would go, so we thought this was ready to go.
Anybody okay with that?
So we have those four then, two dots.
Okay, and the last thing on the agenda is the book that Lisa purchased for us, Kristen has been talking to her about that, Flat World of Education. And my only critique on it right now is that the print is so small, it blabs in my eyes. I actually went to look for one of the electronic versions of it, because I wanted to blow it up. Other than that, you know, I've read the chap, the first chapter, had some time with it, it's very interesting. So the idea here is, do we want to make this some type of document that the board refers back to? In other words, if we're reading some of the chapters, and just a slight discussion in some of our work sessions, something that you can add to a Word doc that comes out to say, we're structuring, really, you know, something you want to discuss with the rest of the board, because that's basically the resource that it serves as, you know, as we're going through this equity and inclusivity here, I think that's a great resource for us, to be able to point to different things and have some conversation about, you know, that we might value in each of our schools, and using some of that, maybe, so, how do we feel about that?
I think it's great, we have to do a, something that's, I think, that, that, to be done.
Great. So maybe we could keep then, this one, you know, Flat World Education, put it on, on our agendas, and then if anybody has anything, they'll add to Google Doc, and then we'll discuss it. If there's nothing, add to Google Doc, then there's nothing to discuss. Am I good? It's for everybody to move their own pace to, I guess.
So you'll use, use the agenda.
Yeah. And certainly, Lisa, if you're discussing things with, you know, your administrators, things come up that, again, will be pointed to that as a resource, and would help us understand better, please refer us to a certain section that we could, or...
The Red Book's actually, you know, as a, as a, you know, industry team, I agree here, so we take a look at this one as well.
Does anybody have anything else to add to the agenda? It's not up here, that, it's still, it's... Okay, so if that's the case, we're going to end this session, hopefully we'll be at 8:00, because I can't see what we're doing. 8:15, and we're going to move into executive session. I believe we're going to be up in the library.